Let me call to order the city council meeting minute, or meeting of Thursday, February 14th, 2019. Happy Valentine's Day. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Noviello, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
We're gathered here again to address city business. As always, the expectations are high, as is our resolve, to make supportable decisions for the greatest number of people. Our decisions are based on facts, often whether we appreciate those facts or not. Our task is to seek out the best sources of input available and employ that input in an open, transparent manner. We're best able to do that through cooperative measures in order to produce mutually satisfactory results. Further, we have every desire to serve the community to the best of our ability while working in unison with the administration and the public. I take this time to thank my colleagues and the public and the administration for their time, effort, and input as we continue to meet our responsibilities. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is approval of city council meeting minutes dated January 30th, 2019. Is there a motion a second to approve those minutes? Second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, so we'll move on to the next item, which is an ordinance and final reading of the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Williamsport. Is, Mrs. Frank, in short form, please.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and the map of the city of Williamsport.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to approve the ordinance and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any motion a second, Mr. Nar? How are you this evening?
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, and members of council. Tonight, what we're presenting is the second reading of the CBD expansion, which will cover the north side of Third Street between Elmira and Center Street. Again, we haven't had any additions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, an ordinance and final reading.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved and final reading. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing execution of contract. And let me provide some context here. There were a number of questions two weeks ago and then over the course of this week on this resolution from council to the administration. The leadership of council met with Mr. Nichols today to discuss those questions and their resolution, and the leadership agreed with Mr. Nichols that maybe at this time the resolution should be pulled from the agenda, and I'll talk about how in a second, so that all of the materials that can be put together to be able to address those questions that council has brought forward over the last few days. I know that there was a bid opening, and that process seems to be resolved, and based on Mr. Nichols and our discussion, many of the concerns around financing have answers, I believe, in place, but they need to be basically pen put to paper in a way that we can have an ability to read and digest and then ask follow-up questions, Ar. And I think doing it right is better than doing it fast, and I think the administration agrees with that. And so, by the process, and the solicitor can correct me if I'm wrong, by the process, the easiest, most streamlined process is for me, as I would do on any agenda item, is to ask for a motion for the resolution, but in this case with the expectation that I will not hear a motion to consider this particular resolution. So is there a motion to approve this resolution on the execution of contract for the scoreboard? Hearing none, we can move on, correct? All right. And so, Mr. Nichols, if we need to have further discussions on that process, and of course, if Mr. Allison and I are here additional questions to incorporate into the materials you're putting together, we will surely pass them along to you. So, thank you for today's meeting. Then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a resolution for a realty transfer tax refund. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution, realty transfer tax refund.
Is there a motion a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Here, motion a second. Mr. Grimes, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you. This is for a refund of realty transfer tax. This is a transfer in names that happened on a property, and the company indicated that it was just a change of names, and they don't owe the realty transfer tax. Later, they were assessed the transfer tax. They paid it to stop interest from accumulating, filed an appeal. The state heard the appeal, decided that it was just a change in names, and they don't owe the realty transfer tax. But in the meantime, we've been given our portion of that realty transfer tax, so now we need to refund that portion, and then the interest that we have to pay back on top of that.
Seems straightforward. Any comments or questions, then, for the treasurer? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, on the resolution, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution for a real estate reduction. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution, real estate reduction.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Here, motion a second. Mr. Grimes.
This is a resolution that you guys see each year. This is for the abatement of real estate taxes on the current LERTA properties that have met all the qualifications, and we have 11 properties currently in the LERTA program. The newest LERTA that was passed in 2018, we don't have any properties that currently qualify for that, but those applications, hopefully, will be coming soon.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions about this resolution? I should have done the math myself on this ahead of time, but did you happen to do any calculations on how much added value was generated on the real estate for these 11 properties, all of which were qualified under the last version of the LERTA ordinance, I believe?
The new assessed value on the 11 properties is $23,564,000. So that's just improvements after, you know, what qualifies for the LERTA exemption.
So that's just the improvements themselves?
Correct.
And so, I know we had a number of discussions about, you know, does LERTA work in terms of stimulating additional economic activity? Out of that $23 million, there's no real way to know how much of that would have occurred even without the last round of LERTA. But undoubtedly, in my mind, undoubtedly, some portion of it would not have occurred, except for the availability of the tax incentives here. And so, that gives us some picture of the kind of scale of the impact of additional real estate value that we had. And of course, we and the other taxing bodies renewed that commercial LERTA in December, so we'll hope that that will continue to stimulate economic activity in the city. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, on the resolution, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the purchase of a mower. Mrs. Frank.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2019 John Deere 1585 Terrain Cut mower.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Here, motion a second. How are you, Ms. Winer?
Good. How about you?
Good.
Thank you. This resolution has authorized the purchase of a new John Deere 1585 Terrain Cut mower. It would be utilized by the Parks Department. They maintain 266 acres of grass. It would be also used for snow removal. We currently have a 2010 Hustler 4600, which is basically extinct. You can't buy parts for it. It's getting more and more complicated to repair. So this would take that machine's place. The funding would come from two separate line items during the budget. We had gotten a quote previous to 2019, and we budgeted $37,000. In 2019, the cost went up of the machine, and the state contract pricing discount went down, so therefore it encouraged more costs. So the other part of the funding would come from the other Parks material line item to purchase the whole thing. That's about all I have. Any questions?
All right. I believe this was reviewed by Finance.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was reviewed by Finance.
Ms. Allison.
It was reviewed by Finance, and we passed it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. I really don't have a whole lot more to add to that. And how many hours did you say?
The old machine had 17,046 hours, I believe it was.
Yeah. That's a lot of use, and they're not going to last forever, but you did a good job stretching out as long as you've gotten out of it. So we appreciate that. And other than that, we need the mower. It's the same cut as the other.
We currently have an identical mower to this, which makes it the perfect fit. Filters would be the same, a lot less parts to stock on the shelf. The implements are interchangeable, so it made the most sense to go with another John Deere.
Right. Mrs. Katz, did...
The other thing that we discussed, we discussed that because of timing, we lost a discount.
Yes.
And what we really want to do is we want to, if there are discounts available to us, to try and take advantage of these discounts instead of because of funding at the time lose... How much money would you say we lost on that?
Roughly $5,000.
And every $5,000 counts.
Absolutely.
And so, we're being very foolish and not taking advantage of time. So we're trying to figure out how we can accomplish this in the future with all, you know, all kind of purchases that have discounts afforded to us. So we did discuss that.
All right. Any other comments from members of council, questions? If I did the quick math in my head correctly, that was, means we spent about $2 an hour on the last mower of use. That's pretty good. 17,000 hours. I'm assuming the last mower costs $35,000 or so.
Yes.
$2 an hour?
Yep.
That's pretty good. See if we can keep inflation from keeping it from going up over the next whatever nine years, I suppose. If there are no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank, on the resolution, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the acceptance of the city's helicopter. Oh, wait, that's not exactly what it says. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing acceptance and placement of a U.S. Army surplus helicopter for Veterans Memorial Park.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Here, motion a second. Ms. Winer?
This is, as many as you know, John Markley dedicated excessive amount of time to the Veterans Memorial Park. They're in the process of creating their wall, and they have a torpedo, a tank, and now they're looking to possibly add a helicopter. But because it is city property, they need the authorization from the city to reach to the Army for this piece of equipment. I think it's a great benefit to add to their, what's becoming a very nice Veterans Memorial Park. It is at no cost to the city. John and the rest of his committee raised the funds and reached out for donations and different items. And John Markley is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And did this go through a...
It went through public works.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay. Mrs. Katz?
This is really interesting, the process for this. This doesn't come and happen overnight. As John has told us, this has a long process, and you said it will take about a year for this to be fully accomplished at this point. What they have done up at that park is absolutely incredible.
Absolutely.
If anybody, if you haven't seen this, so much is being improved, and just so many things are being done with the plaques, with the bricks. And all of it is by donations, as you say, right, John?
Yes.
With this helicopter, this is just going to be another added feature. It is going to be resting up high. It will be, nobody can get into it. It'll be welded shut, just like the tank is, so there'll be no worry about what's going to happen, anybody trying to get into it. The other interesting thing that they're doing up at the park, which I thought was really great, they keep all of the memorial fixtures clean, and they're digging a well at this point to be able to keep everything clean and to also water the plants and other things that they have up there. The other thing that they've been doing is they've had Penn College come up there, and Penn College is taking care of a lot of the building of the wall that they have going around the park. What else are they doing, John? I don't remember what else you said.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. We have them involved also with the landscaping. You'll look at the pictures I've given you. The last page shows just a sample. There's 20 pictures taken. The college students went out and took pictures of the area and come up with their own thoughts. I could only print one picture, but that was just one idea that we have there. The college is also interested in doing all the paving, brick paving for us, so we're hoping we have the concrete laid and the brick pavers all laid by Moil Day Services at the end of May, until I think it's the 25th is our holiday. So we're really hoping it's ready.
And I do have to say, there's a small business in town, Bart's Pizzeria, supplies the pizza for the college kids up there when they do the work.
And we have other organizations giving us gift cards to buy food for the students. That way, they don't have to leave the site. They can stay there, eat a lunch, and get right back to work. And they put in 10, 12 hours a day up there. They've done a great job on all that mountain stone. Just an idea, the Jersey Shore Block donated all the block. There's over 800 block donated. Rose Valley Lake, Rose Valley Concrete donated 14 yards of concrete. They're still going to donate for the sidewalk. We have a little bit of materials we have to buy. 116 ton of two B stone was donated by Hanson. So we're out there reaching all the time, plus raising money. You'd notice there's six more monuments that are going up. You have a copy of them there. We have, tonight, we go to the last vendor that bought it, make sure the wording's correct. It goes into print. It's all black granite stone from Pennsylvania. So we're proud of it. We're always looking forward to move forward.
It was passed with, to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Noviello?
Just a quick thank you again to John and all the folks up there that are really doing the work, including a thank you to the college. And John just informed me that High Steel has also donated a little parcel of land for this element to sit on, so we want to thank them as well. And just the fact that he also mentioned at our meeting the other day that they're using pavers wherever necessary, and that's not going to hurt us with our MS4 requirements coming down the line here as well. So every little bit helps, and I think John's aware of that, too. So thank him again and again. If you pass on our thanks to all those that have been involved, I'd be very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Allison?
What model helicopter is it?
Not quite sure.
Not sure yet, huh?
Now, the trick is, you have on the resolution there, you got one page of the questionnaires we have to fill out. It's four pages.
Okay.
And this is just one step towards it, and a letter to the mayor with him signing off also. We have that ready to go once I have the resolution. We have grid coordinates. We have to have, I addressed the property, which is 3401 West Fourth Street now. There's a whole list of things. I think they do that to people who say, ah, too much paperwork. The committee is really working hard at it. I'm telling you. Denny Bennett, since he come on, has really been pushing. We have quite a few of the members on there push for the bricks. So everybody's really active right now. And we have more things, like Don said. We want to do something for the Blue Stars also. But right now, we want to get the project stopped, started, and finished that we have going now, then we can move forward. So we have contract already, prices for our ceiling and the painting of the parking lot, which is going to be done soon as we have the pavers in. So it's ready and all done. Adam's crew's been doing a great job for us up there. He gives us the trucks when we need it. He goes and brings the material to us. We wouldn't have to pay for delivery. When he has time, we coordinate it in, so it's not a snap finger deal for him. And with the well, we don't have to have the water up there no more. Don't have to have the fire company or the volunteer come up and wash the tank down no more. We'll have our own water. It's going to be nice.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? I just want to thank you for your leadership on the commission and the team that you lead. It is really, you and I have had the opportunity to have several discussions over the last year or two.
We have.
About what the plans were, and now, as the plans are coming to fruition, it's the vision that your team has created and now is implementing, is making a wonderful asset, and a tremendous recognition of the veterans of this community and of the nation and their sacrifice to their country. And so, thank you for taking leadership in that cause in particular.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank, on the resolution, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda, excuse me, is demolition for 522 Louisa Street. Mr. Girardi, how are you this evening?
Good. Dr. Williamson, members of council, we have a demo. Correct first. What you have before you is a request from UPMC Sesquoin Health to demolish a structure located at 522 Louisa Street, which is located in an institutional zoning district. Structure was used as a multifamily rental unit. It is currently vacant. Once it's demolished, they will plant seed, and it'll be grass. And we do have a representative here from the hospital. If you have any questions, it is an institutional zone.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to approve this demolition?
So moved. Second.
Here, motion a second. Comments or questions?
We've made this point before, but just as a reminder to the public, every house that's torn down that the UPMC has acquired, they can, due to a pilot agreement we have with them, they continue to pay the city taxes on that property every year. They pay the taxes that are assessed on that property the day of its demolition.
Correct.
Not when we raise taxes, but it brings a considerable amount of $150,000, is it, Mr. Grimes? Yearly?
I think it's more than that.
Yeah, I would say it's more than that.
... tax increase as well.
Oh, they do.
They made the assessment at the current rate, assessment at time of sale after...
Right.
Oh, the assessment on the property, okay.
So with the building, with the home on it?
As if there is a structure there. Correct.
So, we're not, we're losing housing stock, but we're not losing the city taxes on it.
And it's important to remember, it's also, I think, important to remember that, you know, the purpose, and this was before, I believe, any of us were on council, that the agreement that was originally reached at that time really ended up protecting, I think then, 3,000 jobs in the city, and obviously, since the merger with UPMC, substantially more. And obviously, the, not just renovations, but the tremendous growth of the healthcare resource that we have in our community and benefit from. So if there are no additional comments or questions on the request for demolition, Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the demolition, the request for demolition is approved. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for 343 Pine Street. Mr. Girardi?
Yes. What you have before you is a request to erect a retractable patio cover. It's a five-unit patio cover. It's a wall and post-mounted, brown frame, black fabric, 64 feet long, 16 foot wide, and at the shortest end, it's eight foot tall, and it goes back to 16 foot tall at the building. I have a gentleman brought in a copy of, or a fabric, and actually the color, what the bronze looks like, okay? I also have attached a photo to this. This is for the Brickyard. It's H.I.P. Development LLC. I do get this asked sometimes on these types of things. This is actually on private property, but it's visible to the general public. And according to the design standards, if it's visible to the general public, it needs to be approved by city council. Just wanted everybody to know that, because this is a little bit different scenario, but it is visible. You can see it from the street or the alley. And we do have representatives here. If you have any questions of them or myself.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the certificate?
So moved.
Second.
Here, motion a second. Comments or questions? Mr. Noviello?
Joe, just out of curiosity, we're talking, as I'm looking at the photograph, it extends out, looks like maybe 10 or 12 feet.
Yes.
From the wall. How far does their property line extend into the area that's what we would call the street? It's not a street anymore, but...
It's 100%.
They own...
They own both sides.
Remember that was a building?
That was, that's actually their property. There is actually a structure there.
Oh, that's right. They...
And they removed the structure. They own that, so they own to both sides of the property.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
I think it's a great addition, because the sun does shine on that side. And every time you go down there, especially in the summertime, it's much needed. And for all the activities that are being done in the Brickyard, Courtyard, it is important to have something like that for the comfort of your customers, and it does look very attractive.
Comments? Mr. Henderson?
It's black fabric. How long do we anticipate the life is on that fabric? Do we have any idea?
Around 15 years, really, just by the...
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, on the certificate, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the certificate of appropriateness is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girardi. Next item on the agenda is accept for filing. We have the Economic Revitalization Committee minutes of October 30th, 2018, Public Works minutes of October 23rd, and November 6th, 2018, Controller's report of December 2018, and the Veterans Memorial Park Commission meeting minutes of January 7th, 2019. Is there a motion to accept these for filing?
So moved.
Second.
Here, motion a second. Comments or questions? Ms. Allison?
I have Finance Committee meetings also, October 23rd, 2018.
Okay.
Yes. They were included in your packet, and I forgot to write them.
Okay, so those should be added to the list.
Yes.
I'll ask for the motion in a second to include that as well.
So moved.
Second.
All right. And so, it includes the Finance Committee minutes of, what was the date?
October 23rd, 2018.
October 23rd, 2018. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are accepted. Next item on the agenda, then, is announcements. Next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, February 28th, at 7:30 here in council chambers. Other upcoming, other announcements and upcoming meetings include that on Monday, February 18th, City Hall will be closed for President's Day. On Tuesday, February 19th, at 10:00 a.m., is the Blighted Property Committee meeting. At noon is Planning Commission. At 3:30 is...
ERC. I think we'll keep that.
Okay, ERC meeting. At 4:00 p.m. is the Board of Health, and at 6:30 is Harb. Busy day. On Thursday, February 21st, at 10:30 a.m. is the Zoning Hearing Board. On Tuesday, February 22nd, at 11:00 a.m. is the Historic Review Committee, 1:00 p.m. Finance Committee, 2:30 Public Works, and 3:30 Public Safety. On Wednesday, February 27th, at 11:30... On Wednesday, February 27th, at 11:30 a.m. is the Redevelopment Authority. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Are there comments, questions for members of council? Mr. Slaughter?
Yeah, the taxpayers and citizens with regard to the scoreboard, we deserve to hear all of the information and the city's plans for the scoreboard from the administration, and it should have been tonight. But two weeks from now, we deserve to hear all of that information, if that's when it's going to be, and all of the documents and statements that are supporting that information.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for members of council? Hearing none. Any comments from the administration, Treasurer's Office? None. Any comments from the general public? Mr. Miller, you know the drill.
Scott Miller, 822 Tucker Street. First off, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. As of late, I've been trying to do some research on the city council minutes that are recorded.